I'm gonna go. You can sign in back there.
Very interesting.
Here you guys should be, and then they're like, no, we don't want to. And everybody's like, yeah, sit on either.
Okay.
Oh, really?
Yeah, remember, we need EPA credits. Sort of?
Exactly.
There it is, 6:00 PM. Yep, I see six double zeros, let's go.
Good evening, good evening. This meeting will come to order. Please join me in rising and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands. Ovation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call. District one.
Jason Wienerman here.
District two.
Dave Bentroot here.
District three is represented by Jason Crone, who is the chair. He is not here today. I represent District four. I'm Sean Blackburn, and I will be serving as the chair this evening. District five.
Mike Pearl here.
And at large.
Rich Blankish here.
And at large, number two.
Chair Ostendorf here.
And we have an ex-official.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Bertram, board representative, and I do not vote in any of the proceedings tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. Today, our first agenda is to consider a conditional use permit application submitted by Lang Properties of Avon LLC, Avon, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.8 and 7.6 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439, to complete a conventional subdivision in the conservation design overlay district. The 132.05 acre property will be split into two parcels. The proposal is located in part of the northeast quarter of Section 34, lying east of County Road 50 in Avon Township. The property address is 32906 County Road 50 of Avon. Can we get a review of who we got here? If you would approach and have a seat, applicant, please give us your name and address.
Jeff Lang, representing Lang Properties of Avon.
Thank you. Now, let's do a quick roll call of members who've visited the site. District one.
I did not.
District two.
Yes, I did.
District three, not here. District four, I did as well. District five. And at large, number one.
Yes, I did.
At large, number two.
Yes.
And ex-official.
I did.
Thank you. Let's go to the staff report then about this application.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, so this request is to take this property and split it. It's in the conservation design overlay, also known as the Avon Hills overlay. So in that overlay district, the ordinance requires, if they're not going to do a conservation-style split, then they have to request a conditional use permit. So they're not doing a conservation design where we have small lots and a large chunk of open space. What they are asking for is just to do a 28-acre split with the existing building site. There's a business out there currently, so that's why they're here for a conditional use permit. The property is zoned, it's partially commercial and partially ag. They are within the shoreline overlay of Lineman Lake, so because of that, they are limited in their lot coverage. They can't be over 25% impervious lot coverage, so the lot does meet that requirement at the 28.14 acres. Then the remaining land, that's not outlined in yellow there, that will just, at this point, the plan is to remain as-is. There's a tower on it, a cellphone tower. So, just to give you an overview here of the report, I mentioned it's in shoreline. There was also native plant community, which was that area kind of shaded in blue. It's an oak forest and also some mixed emergent marsh on that part of the property. And that's significant because in Stearns County, only 1.8% of the land is mapped still as a native plant community. So, just thought I'd point that out, and there are standards in the zoning ordinance related to vegetation removal in that area. Access to the property is from County Road 50. The highway department has reviewed this, and they've approved of the land split with the comments that were included in your packet. Each of the two lots has access to the county road, and that's not proposed to change. When we look at the surrounding area, we see the city of Avon is directly north, and there's a mixture in this area of residential, a couple feedlots, and several commercial industrial properties. If the planning commission approves of the conditional use permit to split it in this manner, the only suggested condition we have is that we add a condition stating part of the property lies within the native plant community and is subject to Section 7.7 of the county zoning ordinance. Clearing of vegetation is regulated by this ordinance. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. I'm sorry, applicant, what was your name again?
Jeff.
Jeff, thank you. Commission members, comments, questions?
A question for staff. So this is a conditional use permit for a subdivision. Why? Why is it a permit as opposed to just a subdivision?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wienerman, it'll be both. So if the conditional use permit is approved to split it without doing a conservation design, then they will follow up with the administrative subdivision.
So, once they move through the process and if the county board issues the permit, can that permit be revoked?
In theory, if they weren't meeting conditions, I suppose it could be.
All right, I'm just trying to get my head around it.
Jeff, was there anything that you wanted to add to the report?
Yeah, we don't have any intentions on doing anything else with the property. Reason we are splitting it is we are selling the existing buildings and the 28 acres to Lang Trenching Incorporated, and Lang Properties is going to hold on to the rest of the property.
Tara, did you have a question? Other members, anything?
Mr. Chairman, Jason brings up a good point, Jennifer. I mean, we wouldn't want to have them be in a situation where a permit could be withdrawn.
Right.
So is there... Because normally when you do the subdivision, that's it.
Yeah.
You know, where if it's a conditional use permit, that's why it's a permit, because you grant them, and then you can revoke them if somebody doesn't comply with it, but is there a different, or to specify that it could not get revoked? That's a good question.
Right, yeah. Yeah, good question, Commissioner Bertram. So, as with any conditional use permit, if there was a violation, we would work with them to rectify the violation before heading down the route of revocation. And ultimately, it would be the planning commission and board's decision whether to revoke a permit, but it would seem awkward because the land split would be recorded. So how do you undo that when it was already recorded?
Maybe when it comes, Mr. Chairman, to other issues, you maybe should make mention of that, that it's not the intent to revoke the permit, that it's a procedural. At least that would be on the record.
Correct, yep.
Certainly, thank you. All right, if there's no other comments, questions, anyone? Nothing? We'll go to the findings of fact then.
Public comment? Excuse me? Public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot about the public comment. Was there anyone here from the public who wished to speak on this issue? Please come forward if you have something to say or add.
Move to close.
And a second?
I can.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, then we'll go to the findings.
Mr. Chairman, unrelated to this, Angie Berg is doing an inventory of all the solar towers, and if they're being used or not, do you know if that tower is being used? Like, is there something on it?
Yes.
Like, one or... Normally, we permit them for four, like carriers.
I think there's only one carrier on there right now.
Okay. You might want to tell Angie that, because I know she's having a hard time identifying towers. It's unrelated to this, but I just thought of it.
All righty, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, it is consistent with the zoning ordinance 439, Sections 4.8 and 7.6.
Thank you, Rich. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections, please.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. I believe the proposal as presented conforms with the comprehensive plan, nature goals. Number one, preserve, restore, and protect important natural systems. And then number two, to ensure the reasonable responsibilities of the county natural resources.
Thank you, Jason. Number three, then, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, it's compatible as nothing's changing as far as the existing development.
Thank you, Tara. Number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, we have the one condition about vegetation management restrictions, and also the overlay zone is a restrictive covenant as well.
Thank you, Jason. On to other issues. Anything other issues pertinent to the matter?
Mr. Chair, as we spoke, we had the discussion on the conditional use permit, and the expectation that the permit would not be revoked should the county board approve this application.
Thank you, Jason. So, oh, I forgot to ask about correspondence. Did we have some correspondence to address this?
We did not. There was no written correspondence.
All right, thank you.
Could I also ask clarifying question? Who seconded the motion to close the hearing?
Rich Blankish. Any... Waiting for a motion then now, please? Thank you. We have a motion. Looking for a second?
All set.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Do we know when the next hearing then will be for the applicant?
October 10th.
October 10th? Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number two. The applicant is to consider an interim use permit request submitted by Pearl Garden LLC of Minneapolis, Minnesota, on behalf of Rose Shalanka from Avon, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.18, 6.54, and 9.2.6F of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439. The request is to construct a 1-megawatt solar garden located on part of the east half and southeast quarter in Section 24, lying south of 225th Street and west of County Road 10 in Zion Township. The property address is 25491 of 225th Street in Painesville. Can we get a roll call of members who visited the site? Jason Wienerman?
I did not.
Dave Bentroot?
Yes, I did.
Jason Crone is not here. I did. Mike Pearl?
Yes, I did.
Rich Blankish?
Yes, I did.
Tara Ostendorf?
Yes.
And Jeff Bertram?
Yes, I did.
All right, thank you. Let's go to the staff report then, please.
All right. So this property, they're proposing to have a solar garden. The reason they're requesting the interim use permit is because the ordinance allows 1 megawatt of solar on a property as by right with a construction permit. And so they have submitted an application for a construction permit, and then this garden would be the second megawatt on the property. Therefore, the interim use permit is being requested for this solar garden. So in the maps, you saw the proposed permitted use would be to the north, and then this proposed garden would be just south of that. And the property is zoned agricultural 80. It's not, the proposed garden is not within any overlay districts or areas of concern. The property has access from County Road 10, and highway has issued an approach permit for that. The property is currently farmland, and if you were out there, you saw somewhat flat on the front, but then it slopes to the south and west. You can see that it's up kind of on a big bluff, up at the top of a bluff where the land flattens out again. So the property, or the solar farm, is proposed on prime farmland per the Prime Farmland Soils map that's in our comp plan. So the applicant addressed questions related to their selected location in the application packet. They do not need to do a stormwater management plan. They did submit an erosion control plan. All power and communications lines will be underground up to the point of interconnection as required. For screening, they're proposing just your typical ag fence around it, but then they're also proposing screening to plant a row of evergreen trees on the east side along the road, and it would go up the east side of the northern solar garden, and then the north side of that solar garden. So basically, the two road edges would be screened with one row of evergreens. One thing we've suggested is if the northern garden is not built for some reason, then we would require screening on the north side of this pearl garden. We also suggested screening on the south side, for you guys to consider and see if you feel that was necessary for those that were out there. You have a feel for how visible it might be from the south side as you're heading north. No tree removal is proposed, and as required in the ordinance, they will establish the ground cover. Within the garden, under the solar panels, will be native pollinator habitat species, as is required. There are no wetlands in the project area. This is within a site that's mapped, in the state of Minnesota, has a natural heritage information system, and there is a mapped site within a mile of the solar garden. It's actually to the south in that low area, and so the DNR letter that they received, they received comments back, so the DNR has a list of conditions there, or comments, I should say. So one that we wanted you to discuss and decide on was, it says, "If possible, conduct the work under frozen ground conditions." And then the other suggestions we also added in our proposed conditions, which were using effective erosion measures, erosion control measures, inspect and clean all equipment before bringing to the site to prevent introducing invasive species, revegetate the disturbed soil with native species suitable to the local habitat, and then using only weed-free mulches, topsil, and seed mixes. and then using only weed-free mulches, topsoil, and seed mixes. Okay, so that's covered in the conditions. They did submit a decommissioning plan, and the county requirement has been $185,000 financial guarantee to ensure decommissioning. We're not within two miles of an airport, so we didn't need the aviation analysis. Looking at the surrounding area, going out a half miles, there's about 15 homes in the area, four registered feedlots. It's all surrounded by ag 80 zoning, and the city of Roscoe is nearby to the south. So if the Planning Commission recommends approval, the conditions we suggest are listed out there. It is an interim use permit, so we'd set an expiration date. They're requesting it be a 35-year permit, which would bring us out to the year 2058. Second condition, having a qualified engineer certify that the foundation is within acceptable professional standards before issuing our construction permit. And then we have a financial guarantee for the decommissioning. Also notifying the county at least a year before decommissioning, say, hey, we're going to decommission now. We would request a new estimate from them. If the estimate's going to exceed $185,000, then they would need to submit additional funds to cover that. Okay, number four, the requirement to install that pollinator habitat within the garden. And we would require a financial guarantee to ensure that gets done properly. We keep that for a minimum of three years or longer if it's not sufficiently growing. The ground cover needs to be maintained in that manner for the life of the project. And we would do monitoring every three years. A seating plan review and inspection fee is required before we'd issue our construction permit, and that'll help cover the cost of those every three-year inspections. And environmental services shall be notified when the site is seeded and who the contact will be for inspections. Number five, so the vegetative screening, that's those evergreen trees that'll be around the sides. So we have the requirement that they install that along County Road 10, and then if you determine needed, on the south side. And then also, lastly, on the north side, if that northern garden is not constructed. And again, submitting a financial guarantee to make sure that those trees get planted and they grow well. And we keep that one for a minimum of three years as well. Notify the department if there's any changes in ownership, including new contact information. The developer shall make the landowner aware of all the conditions related to the interim use permit. And the seventh condition would be to minimize disturbance to the documented calcareous fen plant community south of the proposed garden. And then listing out those conditions I mentioned earlier that came to us from the DNR.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. And you are?
My name is Frederick Ebinger. I work for Nicomas Energy as a project developer. I go by Fritz. I'm sorry.
Thank you. And do you have anything to add at this point?
Thank you to the staff for being professional, very communicative with us. I think Jennifer covered it really well. If you'd like, I can go into details about the project and the pollinator habitat and the hydrology of it all, but it's standard community solar garden for what I've seen across Minnesota.
All right. Commission members, questions, comments?
I do have some questions related to the ownership and the IUP, the length and the terms. When looking at this, I feel like I can't really follow, let's call it the chain of custody of who owns and is responsible for it, for the length of the IUP. So could you just explain who owns the property, who's the developer, who is the, who actually owns the project at the end of it, when all these financial securities are out there at the end of the 35 years for the decommissioning? Who's responsible for all of that?
The landowner is Rose Shalanka, who is here with us. We are the, Nicomas Energy is the project developer. For the company that develops, it sits in a series limited liability company like other operators do. The name of this project is called Pearl Garden LLC. Effectively, that's the vessel that is owned by the buyer at the end of the day. And as a project developer, or any project developer, we look for buyers that want to own that asset as a long-term operating profitable enterprise. In terms of who's responsible for it at the end of the lifespan, we are. We do the operations and maintenance here in Minnesota. So we're, the obligation is to remove the steel piles, remove the conduit, take off the panels, recycle the metal, recycle the panels, and then return it to its predevelopment condition. That's also the purpose of the $185,000 decommissioning bond. So that's, does that answer your question?
In part. So the $185,000 decommissioning fee, is that, was that a letter of credit or is that a cash escrow?
Cash escrow.
Yeah, we allow either, and I would say we get about half and half. Yeah.
So if it's a cash escrow, does that stay in place for 35 years, assuming that Nicomas Energy is?
That stays with the county. That's a check that any energy developer in Stearns County writes to the county.
I'm just trying to cover all the bases.
Thank you, Tara. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, to that point, that's a very good question, Tara. I assume this is the first one the Planning Commission probably has seen this year because the staff is doing the permitting. But that's a very good question. I don't know if we know, and because of, I was on the Planning Commission for so many years and because we dealt with so many of these, I don't know how many, if we got a list of how many projects were sold multiple times. And so a project comes in, establishes the project, and they're potentially sold. I know there was one that was sold like three or four times, and that's why that's a good question. The county holds the funds, but it gets a little confusing. Sometimes it's Nicomas Energy, and then he said, he referenced the buyer. And that's where it gets dicey because, okay, now am I dealing with you, or am I dealing with the buyer, or am I dealing with a third buyer? And that, that's a legitimate question. And with the experience, you know, we've got over 40 of these, we've seen just about everything.
Commissioner Bertram, may I respond?
Oh, absolutely. He's the chair. He can decide.
Please do.
Chair Blackburn, with her permission, I was going to say that we are required to tell the county who owns the project if there's a change in ownership. And it would be on record who owns the project.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's true because we found out that they were being sold without us knowing it. So then we added that requirement that, but it wasn't, it wasn't made known to us in earlier projects.
Right, correct. Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, there was a lot of quick, easy dealing going on for a while there. And there were things that, projects that were sold before they were even completed.
I didn't find out until tonight, Mr. Chairman, that if the $185,000 doesn't cover it, that there's potential as additional funds. I don't know how we'd, if a developer was broke, I don't know how we'd get that. But it's good to know that you can get additional funds.
May I respond to the?
Please.
I've heard that question a lot, if a developer is broke. And it's an energy and financially producing asset, so the interest of whoever owns it is to make sure it's operating profitably. So the developers don't go broke. What we do is we sell the project in the same way a single-family home developer sells a home to another person. And then, once it's sold, their interest is maintaining the asset as a financially profitable asset. The decommissioning requirement is what ties us to the site. That's why we're obligated to return it to a predevelopment condition per the county's requirements, and also under our contract with the landowner as well. In response to how the projects get bought and sold, a lot of projects are sold before they are built because that's how they are financed, meaning there's a lot of equipment on the site. There's a deep-pocketed investor that fronts the money to build that project. And then they, effectively, it's, they're investing their money in the solar panels and the energy and the electrons that come off those panels.
Is there, is there a way to monetize or qualify or describe the local benefit to a solar garden like this, to the area farmers, to the city of Roscoe, local township, whatever?
Yeah, there are several different ways that happens. We'll start with A1 is, in this instance, the property taxes would go up on the approximately 14 acres because there are two megawatts on that parcel. They would go up to, I think I wrote that out. They go to one and a half, they go from a 1% agricultural tax classification to 1.5% in the first, $150,000. And then it goes up to a 2% rate after that, subject to local levy and state general tax. So there's more public revenue coming in on that acreage. In terms of community solar garden development, the energy dollars stay locally. So the, there's a geographic limitation to any solar project, meaning that it has to be in Excel Energy territory or an adjacent county. And the rate pairs, or the participants have to be rate pairs to Excel Energy. What we do is we offer energy at a lower rate, and we allow businesses, sometimes schools, to lock, sometimes local governments, if you're interested, to lock in a long-term fixed rate that typically, I would say, almost always beats out the rate increases that most people see from Excel Energy. So the energy dollars stay local, which is why people subscribe to the solar gardens. The third benefit I would highlight is the prairie pollinator habitat and the additional ground cover. The prairie pollinator habitat, polliners effectively serve about a third of the state's agriculture in terms of apple orchards, and blueberries, cherries, tomatoes, cucumbers, and so forth. And I would candidly congratulate Stearns County on latching on to that requirement because I used to work at the University of Minnesota, and that was one thing that university professors would scream at us, is that pollinator habitat is critical to the state's agricultural success. In addition, the pollinator habitat, because it's deep-rooted prairie, adds some filtration benefit. It also would reduce any kind of runoff that you would otherwise see from an agricultural field. So I highlight those three primary benefits to the local community.
Mr. Chair, for the applicant, you mentioned a couple of times, upon decommissioning, the site will be returned to a predeveloped condition. And you just talked about the prairie habitat. So does predevelopment condition mean you will discount the prairie and return it to cropland, or are you going to leave it to the discretion of the landowner?
It's, I would leave it to the discretion of the landowner. If the landowner desires to till it up and return it to our farm field, they're welcome to do that. They would sit on probably a good 25 years of organic accumulation to the benefit of the soil, but...
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question, just for my information, and everybody else is trying to figure this out. The proposed conditions that we're going to be considering state that the permitty is required to submit a financial guarantee as required by the board to supplement the original letter of credit or cash escrow, and the board may increase the financial guarantee required for decommissioning upon application to amend the interim use permit. My question is, the permitty, as you've described, is going to be Pearl Garden LLC as the applicant. Is that correct? So we don't know who the owner is going to be at the time that this might have to happen?
The decommissioning that you're referring to?
Well, I'm just saying, like, the 3B in the conditions in your packet.
Mr. Chair, if I could address that. Yes, so when the expiration date nears, and this is something that we do with mining operations as well, those are our other common interim use permits, as they're getting close to their expiration date, we notify them, hey, it's coming up due. Are you going to be done and out of here and reclaimed, or are you going to need to apply for an amendment to extend it? And if they aren't going to be done and recommissioning, they would have the option to apply to amend it, to extend that date out. So at that time, yeah, it would be, it would have to still be Pearl Garden LLC, because if the ownership changes from Pearl Garden LLC, then we have to reevaluate the interim use permit. So anyway, if, so the applicant would still have to be Pearl Garden LLC, or they would have already done an amendment to change the owner. Yeah, it would be the applicant would be who's applying, whoever owns it at the time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Thank you.
Chair, if I could, I don't, I'm not sure if this is for staff or the applicant, but has Zion Township weighed in on this? And, or the, well, and, the DNR?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I could answer that. So Zion Township didn't provide us with formal comments. The developer did go visit with the township, and I know the township is here. If we want to ask them, or they'll probably speak at the hearing portion. And then as to the DNR, we got the comments that were included due to it being near a natural heritage site. There was that letter in there from the DNR, and that's where those conditions came from, because there's the calcareous fen at the bottom of that hill. So we got those, and they recommended the conditions that are listed in number seven.
Thank you.
I got a question for staff. Are these the first two solar gardens in Zion Township? I'm not recalling if they're in years prior.
I'm not recalling off the top of my head, but I'll look quick.
There's at least, there's at least, Mr. Chairman, one other. There might be two. But there's for sure one other with...
One megawatt?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just curious, you know, when I looked and I didn't see any others from when it was up on the roads there.
There's for sure one, Mr. Chairman. Bob Leeser was one of the first ones that we approved.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm not sure if the stamer one, I think, is in the Painesville Township, but it's right on the edge. That could, that maybe is not in Zion, but it's right on the edge. And then there was an application for one where it was in a environmentally, environmental same situation. We denied that one.
Mr. Chair, question for the applicant. So with the DNR comment, they're asking us to consider whether to require the work being done under frozen ground conditions. Can this be installed under frozen ground conditions?
It would be hard and dangerous to do it under those conditions. I talked to our engineer about that. He said typically, if it's frozen ground, there's also snow on the ground. It creates challenging conditions for the workers that are in the field, risk damaging equipment, and also risk things like frost heave if the piles don't go in properly. I mean, if we can fly to the moon, there are ways that we can do things done. But I think there are ways that we can work this out where we can avoid any kind of risk of the calcareous fen. The fen is 250 feet away. We will put up a silt fence. Right now, there's no silt fence on that ag field. It's until ground. I think if, you know, as I reviewed the environmental reports, basically, we will leave that site in a better state than it is to protect that fen with the prairie ground cover.
All right, thank you.
I have another question, Mr. Chair. The background for the project says that you're not required to do a stormwater management plan because you're not creating an additional acre of impervious. But you are disturbing it, so I'm assuming that you're getting the MPDS construction permit, which does require a SWIP and does have a stormwater management plan in it already.
That's, that's how I understand it. The only thing I'd comment on that is the MPC, because it's, solar panels are treated differently, especially when there's ground cover differently. So the calculation is very different. It's not impervious surface, so...
Mr. Chair, could I just comment on a couple of things?
Please.
So to confirm what Commissioner Bertram said, there is one other one in Zion, which is that Leeser property. And then, that's two and a half miles to the west. And then there's another one proposed to the south of the site, but not permitted yet in Zion. And then this photo was just, if you were out there, you recognize this as well, but up at the top of that hill is where the solar garden will sit, and then down below in that vegetated areas where that fen is, that calcareous fen. All I have.
Anything more, Mr. Bertram?
Mr. Chairman, and commission members, if you want me to shut up at some point, you can tell me to do that. But it's hard for me to sit here with everything that I know, and Tara's asking a lot of questions, because again, she's new. It would be a loss if I wouldn't share what we learned after doing, you know, 50 of these. Some of us were part of that, some of us weren't, and gradually in. So if you don't mind, I won't talk as much as Commissioner Persky does, but I will answer the questions. He sets a pretty high standard, so I don't think I can beat that. But, and again... But, and again, this isn't necessarily editorial, or it isn't critical or positive, but this is the factual stuff that I've been exposed to over the last 50-some applications that we've seen. The, the, what Jennifer just said is accurate, so, okay, there's one existing, and the, with the application that has been made, has been submitted to staff, and they approved that one, I don't believe staff has denied one yet, so that, it's gonna be two, so this would be the third, and then right before the moratorium, we'll hear that from Zion Township, right before they enacted the moratorium, another project was applied for, which will go to staff, which again, will be approved. So there will be four before this one. So there, there are, and then there were, there's numerous applications that are in the works that now will have to be put on hold, and when I say numerous, more than one. And if somebody wants to know, I'd love to answer the question, why suddenly this influx of these applications in Zion Township? So the proposed, there will be more than one. For sure, there will be one, two, three, for sure, three, and then depending on what you guys and we do with this one. Jennifer explained, Mr. Chairman, very accurately about the decommissioning and all that stuff, but the reality of it, that's what's, that's what's required, but none of us have gone through that. And this is gonna be 35 years, God willing, I hope I'm here to see this, and I hope it goes well. I probably won't care as much then as I do now, but this is all new territory. And so the decommissioning fee was not a part of our discussions until we pushed that, and we imposed it, and we got criticized for it being too high, and we went through all this, and some of us all know that. And again, not negative or positive or negative, but the reality is, is the reason they name these gardens different names, it's Nocomus or whatever developer, I mean, I think we've had 60 developers in Stearns County. It's, any developer does this, and again, God bless them, it's free enterprise, but they name the gardens because if you're not afraid of going broke, why are you naming them different names? Because when they do go broke, or if they do go broke, or they do have to be commissioned, and it's more than 185,000, they literally then disown Jason, because they named that one Jason, and then they disown Tara, but you're the company, but you can then financially just step out of these individual products. And again, God bless them, they're being smart. At the end of the day, I don't know how that benefits Zion Township residents, but that, that's kind of the game. The pollinator, every developer hangs their hat on that. The only reason the pollination is there is because we required it, the state required it. No one came in at the beginning and said, hey, we wanna, we wanna propose putting pollination in, and they're doing it, and they're doing the decommissioning fee, and they're doing these things because we're requiring it. So the planning commission, staff, the county board, before me, did their jobs by making sure that that all happened. Energy use, I spent a lot of time on this. The reason that they are doing everything in Zion Township now is that great big substation that we've all seen along 23 was put in for Geronimo Energy, and there's a prime example that was wind energy. That was put in to accommodate a huge wind generation project that was supposed to go in between Painsville and Lake Henry. I sat through two years of hearings on that. I mean, it cost the county far beyond the permit visa. And then what happened was, XL Energy created that substation to be able to feed that energy. Well, everybody goes through all this work, and what happens is Geronimo Energy goes south. They don't have a buyer, they don't have the finances, and so everything was in place, and they book. When the money's gone, trust me, these people that don't live here are gone. If you live in Zion Township, you're probably gonna still be living if you're alive, but they're gone. And so then now you got this substation. Well, solar developers need a substation to tap into, and so that's why Painsville Township has 17, I thought it was 15, but I think it's 17 solar sites. Well, they finally said, this is crazy, and they stopped them, they prohibit them. The city of Painsville's gonna have two, and then of course, whatever Zion does now, there's gonna for sure be four. Well, there's no way in the world that Painsville, and Painsville Township, and Zion Township, and Roscoe can use the energy that is being produced by these 20 solar sites. And again, right or wrong, what happens is, it's like a water hose, and again, I, I'd spent a lot of time on this, the energy gets tapped into the substation, and then the substation, it flows to the path of least resistance, which 99% is Maple Grove and the cities. The power goes to where the need is, and they'll argue this, but again, none of us are that foolish to think that a, a little community like Painsville Township and Painsville and Zion can use all this energy. And again, God bless them, that's what's happening, and that's what they're doing, but this energy is being produced for somebody that's way far away from, and ironically, there's no solar farm, sites, they call them farms, I call them solar industrial sites, there's none in Maple Grove, or Plymouth, or, you know, they don't wanna look at them, they don't wanna deal with them. So that's that part. And then the property tax, I'm really curious about that, because I've been told, and I don't know if you know this, I've been told more than once, if it's, it's A80, that's the tax, the use doesn't change, it's still zoned agriculture, so I've been told that the tax does not change. I think that's the first time I've heard that, and I'm not doubting it, but it's just the first time I heard that. Now, in Painsville's case, it's zoned A40, and in the city limits, they have to zone it light industrial or light commercial. That will change on 20 acres, and guess what the city's gonna get for that? $200. So it sounds good, but at the end of the day, it's nominal. And again, right or wrong, whatever. Oh, and then when you ask Jason on the, if it can be constructed, Mr. Chairman, I hope you don't mind if I call you Fritz, Fritz said it would be hard and it would be dangerous. What he left out was it would also be costly. And again, this is all about the money. Do we wanna protect the environment? Do we wanna protect the township? Do we wanna, or is it fast and easy isn't always the best way to do it? So that's my comments.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Hi, anyone else from the panel?
Yeah, I got a question for Commissioner Bertram. You currently are involved with the Solid Waste Committee for Stearns County?
Yes.
Is, so I'm reading through the decommissioning plan, and it says in here that this, you know, they are going to meet the requirements of Stearns County's solid waste requirements. Did the committee actually go through and determine these, these items, like what do you do with the modules, what do you do with the racking? Did they actually go through and say, this has gotta go here, these parts have gotta go there?
May I respond?
Yeah.
The panels are recycled. They don't go into the solid waste landfill.
Oh, and I'm asking, I'm asking him, did the, did the committee, solid waste committee, go through the actual decommissioning of solar arrays?
Mr. Chairman, we did not, and I'm curious to hear what Fritz has to say about the recycling, because every one of these projects, I question that, because as we all know, I'm also with West Central Sanitation, and for 26 years, I deal with this. Today, currently, you cannot landfill them, and you can't recycle them, there's no recyclable. Now, if you've got a place that you can recycle them, again, it's kinda like the decommissioning, nobody's ever done it. So, and if you've got something, maybe this is a breakthrough technology, but right now there is no place to, and you can't landfill them, and of course, which begs the questions, what would be so bad with a solar panel that you won't wanna have them go in the landfill? And then the recycling, I'm gonna be curious to hear what Fritz has to say about that.
May I respond, Chair?
Please do.
The panels are recycled. About 85% of the panels are glass and aluminum. The remainder is silicon, which is basically nice sand. The reason they're recycled is because they do have metals that are desirable, like silver in them. There are facilities that, that recycle electronics like this in Minnesota, there are many that are in California. There are also take-back programs and specific standards by which they're, they're recycled. The reason Minnesota doesn't see it very much now is because there's not very much content to recycle. I've been a part of conversations with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency since 2019. Right now, panels are classified as non-hazardous waste, but I've had lots of conversations and uniformly across the state, no county wants these in their landfills, and I don't think any developer wants to put them there. I mean, it's, so when we say they're gonna be recycled, they're gonna be recycled, I don't know. That's in our, that's what we've written in our permit application. When we say we're gonna take, take the steel piles out and recycle them, that's also valuable material as well. I mean, it's, the, the ethic, I think, you would find of any developer in Minnesota is a circular economy, which is what we're, what we're seeking here.
Mr. Chairman, I guess my point would be, it's circular, but again, no disrespect, but it comes down to the money. Do you really think, what do you think it would cost to ship? And remember, just in this Zion Township-Painsville area, there's 20 sites, average of 5,000 to 7,000 panels, because some of the older sites have more panels. What do you think that would cost to haul it from Painsville, Zion Township, to California? And who's gonna pay that? You think 185 is gonna cover that? And God bless, hopefully something will happen, but yep, again, and Fritz, to his credit, he's consistent, the metals and everything else, what's valuable, they'll pull that. Well, what's, what about, what are we gonna do with what's not valuable?
The specialty glass has value, so does the aluminum.
And Mr. Chairman, and Fritz, tell me, where have you taken a solar panel in the last six months where you were able to recycle it, and can we confirm that somehow?
I mean, I could give you a list of sites, but in the last six months, no solar panel would have been recycled because they're in the field producing energy. I mean, that's the value, and in addition, there's a secondary market for them.
Mr. Chairman, and the only reason I know that that's not accurate is, you can imagine if you're installing 5,000 to 7,000 panels, one's gonna break, one's gonna drop, something's gonna happen. So some of these panels have been incapacitated before they've even put, put up, not just by you, again, we're dealing with 50 developers, so you're not the only one. Where did they go? There's no place to take them here, and you're not gonna ship one panel to California. But again, if you've got someplace, please let everybody know, because we need to know that, because when it, when it happens, it's not if it happens, it's when it happens.
All right, all right, thank you. This is a hearing that is open to the public. If there's anyone here from the public who wishes to address this issue, please come forward and introduce yourselves. Keep your comments brief, please. Yes?
I'm Duane Berg, Chairman of Zion Township. Number one, we're way beyond where we should be with this. Have you guys been out to Zion Township and seen this particular project that you're talking about? Jeff might have.
No, they all have.
You all have been out to the site?
Yep, except for Jason Kunt.
Okay, well, there's 225th is the road going into Mr. Paul Schmitz's driveway, it heads right onto his driveway. And the road right away from, from, for Zion Township is 30 feet from the center of the road is township property. And you're saying a 50-foot setback, well, that's only 20 feet that you're off the road right away. In my mind, for snow, it's a big snow catch for this 225th. And if you want any more information, Mr. Paul Schmitz is here. The other year when the corn wasn't combined in time, he was out there four or five times plowing the township road open. This particular project I'm talking about. It's, it's not just a personal, and I'm the chairman, but I'm looking out for a township party that lives on the end of this 225th.
Okay. And you're saying that...
Is that taken into consideration?
Well...
Well, it definitely should. I'm not on the planning commission, but I definitely think it should.
Would you like me to...
Jennifer, do you have a response?
Sure. The project that Duane is referring to is the Northern Project, which is the Coronas, is that what it's called?
Coronas.
Coronas Garden. And that's the one they submitted a construction site permit application for, so that one is being reviewed in office. That's the one that's along 225th. So it's not the subject of tonight, tonight we're just discussing the southern one, but I can tell you, as to the road setback, the required setback is 63 feet from center of the road, and...
63, excuse me.
Yeah, the required setback is 63 feet from center, they're proposing to go further, but I don't have it up. Looks like 85 feet is what they're proposing? Yeah. Did you pull up the, can you pull up the Coronas one, shall I, that other PDF? Yeah, there you go. And go down to page four. If you zoom in on the, like, kinda the northeast corner of the garden there. Yeah, so this is the other one that's being reviewed administratively, and so they're proposing 45 feet from center line to the fence, and then another 40 feet to the actual panels, is what we have right now.
But that's the other project?
Yep, that's the other project, exactly, yep.
And are you gonna plant trees around there, and... Can you imagine the snow catch that's gonna do to 225th? And this farmer has to get in and out, send his trucks and whatever need to get in and out, or they're gonna lead it to his driveway.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for that. Is it currently farmed with corn now?
Pardon?
What's the current land use on there right now? Is it farmed in corn?
That particular property?
Yeah.
Right now, I believe it is corn receiving, on that particular site.
It's beans, but if it's sometimes corn, how far does that get to the township road? Because it's not, not the same as trees and a fence.
No, it gets a lot closer.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, that's what, I get what you're saying, but if you plant trees around this property of the solar site, that's gonna be more of a snow catch.
I, I don't know.
Eventually.
I guess my point is, I don't think the vegetation, if it's crop of corn or trees, is gonna make a difference to the...
Well, it definitely is, because corn is harvested in the fall, it's not there in the winter months.
Mr. Chairman, for Supervisor Berg, it's on, do you wanna just talk about the moratorium? I know it was after this, but you may as well just verify that you've imposed a moratorium.
Okay, well, yeah, but this here was in process before the moratorium?
Right. But there is, Mr. Chairman, you do have a moratorium in effect now.
Right.
Just for the record, I said it before, and I wanted him to say it.
Right. We've had four or five other applicants already requested for more solar farms, or gardens, whatever you wanna say. All of a sudden, we're bombarded in Zion Township for solar gardens. It is agriculture community, that's what it is.
Mr. Chair, question for the township member. What's, what is so offensive about these sites you decided to install a moratorium?
Repeat, please.
What is so offensive about these solar gardens you decided to initiate a moratorium?
As far as we're concerned?
I, I mean, I'm assuming there was something that the township decided was unsightly unpleasant about...
We're all in favor of alternative energy, but all of a sudden, we, we're bombarded by them, and we're worried a month ago, we didn't hear nothing about it. And boom, here we are, and we're trying to defend our, whatever, just, we're not behind the eight all the way we should be. We'd like to have some time to think about this whole business.
And Mr. Chairman, I was at the meeting that day, had some discussions on this. Zion Township is the smallest township in my district, and it's one of the smaller townships in the county. In fact, they hold their township meetings around a kitchen table at their clerk's home, which is, that's as close to the people as you're gonna get. But the concern is, one with the snow fences, and Supervisor Berg, I think, answered Tara's question, the corn's harvested, except for when you said that one year couldn't be, well then it did become a snow fence or whatever. But typically, even at 80 feet, and I don't care if it's the other project, this is all linked. Typically, like, if you drive down the freeway, when they put up those temporary snow fences during the winter, you know, they're set off, or when they do pay farmers to leave corn set, to act like a snow, they're setback 200, 300 feet. So I mean, even 85 feet won't be enough, it will be, and the snow comes, the wind comes from the west, so... But what, what they said over and over and over again, it's a rural agricultural township, and they want it to be in, in, in the findings, you know, it says, you know, utilize sustainable practice, protect prime farmland, and staff identified it as prime farmland, retain areas with highly valued agriculture. This is a farming township, farms are passed on to second, third generations, and they're And they're just concerned that suddenly their, their farmland in their township won't be agricultural based. Like the county has identified that that's what our, one of our top five goals are. It will be filled with solar panels where people can't farm the land and can't pass it on to their family. In a farming way. That's what I heard.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, does Zion Township, do they have a comprehensive plan? And, and would this, or could this fit within that plan?
Eventually. Then we have the moratorium eventually, what we decide.
But do, do you have a comprehensive plan for Zion Township?
Yeah, we have plans, yeah.
Okay. The county does all the permitting form and everything. Again, they're a very small township. I don't know, I think you've just adopted pretty much the agricultural eighty. The county kind of manages it, I think. I don't think they have a, they don't have a comp plan like Wake Park would have or Paynesville would have. They don't have a comp plan.
I wasn't sure at the township.
No, it's strictly agriculture. There's no lakes or whatever in Zion Township, so.
Thank you. So they've adopted pretty much the county.
Correct.
Process.
Mr. Chair, my only comment is on the, on his concern about being a, a snow catch. I've worked with MinDOT for 20 years plowing snow, and to me, when I look at this array in the field. I, I see an array, but I also see a row and row and row of actual snowfens.
All right, thank you. Was there-
I can sit down, but if Mr. Schmidt could come up here, the party that has the farm place on the end of 225th?
Certainly, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I make a comment quick first? I want to correct what I said earlier about the road setbacks. So as we're speaking here, and I apologize, because Heidi's reviewing the Northern Garden. Anyway, so Zion Township, they have a zoning ordinance, and for the most part, they adopted the county's ordinance. But one area they're more restrictive on is their township road setback, which is 100 feet. So they do say, and this is something Heidi, she might not have gotten to this part in her review yet. But in all districts, all structures, trees, hedges, shelter belts, and temporary windbreaks shall be 100 feet from the center line of the township road. So that's in the township ordinance already today. So that'll be one thing that we'll be reviewing this and making sure that they meet that. So I'll have to do some revisions, it looks like.
Were they at 85? Is that, is that what you said earlier?
Well, the actual panels are shown at 85, but those trees are maybe 35, so they'll have to move them quite a ways.
Thank you.
Maybe 40, yeah.
I do want to note for the record that I, I contacted the township clerk and specifically asked about their roadway. And she told me that we did not need to worry about that. And so we assume, in addition, this is, this is an administrative review for Coronas Garden, not the subject of this conversation. The subject of the conversation is the solar garden to the south, so I do want to keep the eye on the ball here.
Certainly.
But our concern is you're letting one go, and pretty soon, we're going to have 15, 20 of them.
I understand, thank you.
I, I would, I would like to respond. I worked, I worked for the University of Minnesota Extension for seven years prior to this position. Promoting the exact practices that, that Stearns County adopted. I went back and I reviewed the articles about the pollinator habitat. The way solar, the way solar looks now compared to how it started decades ago, and it looks phenomenally better. Including the tree screening, the agricultural fences and so forth. The reason that the University of Minnesota Extension decided to have these discussions is because they view this as. A part of the diversification of the rural economy. And I know that farmers face all kinds of pressures like margin compression. There are only a few, a few numbers that can actually change. The other thing I want to point out is that this is not the township's land. This is a privately held piece of land. And the landowner also has rights in this conversation as well.
It's a private held piece of land, but the party doesn't live in Zion Township.
Thank you. If you wanted to make a comment, please.
Well, that's the only concern I really, really got.
Your name and address, please.
Paul Schmidt. So the only concern, like I said, we, I use that road multiple times in a day. And it's, it's a township road, but I got to blow out to the county road 10 a lot of times because it plugged up like last winter. There was no, no holdback, and I mean, the snowplow couldn't get in at the end because of, I mean, it was just an ugly year last year. But I, I blow it out so I can get in and out. I got feed coming in, and I, I used to have cows that had a milk truck coming all the time. Like what Dwayne said, it's agricultural community, and it's, it's, it's prime land. And some of these, not against solar or green energy, but I think it's. Prime farmland should stay prime farmland and try to find a little marginal land to put some of this stuff on. You know, so that's, like I said, pretty much what Dwayne had said, so.
All right, thank you.
Can we get your address, please, for the record?
What's that?
Your address, please.
It's 25569 225th Street, Paynesville.
Thank you.
Any more comments from the public?
Becky Miller, I'm Zion Township Supervisor. Couple of things that I'd like to bring up in regards to the solar farm application is. Zion Township is zoned agriculture for a reason, one house per eighty. We feel that it is very important to preserve the row crop. Acres for our youth as well as currently. It keeps getting gobbled up, and the concern is, is that we're not going to have, I mean, this theoretically would be taken out of production. As far as what we consider agriculture for the row crops for 35 years. It's hard enough now for our children to want to get started in farming for the costs and things. And if we keep taking more land out, it becomes a higher commodity and the costs even go up higher. If we, as a township, were really looking for the revenue like Fritz had alluded to. In regards to having the two megawatt. He is incorrect on that, because we have had the last several years correspondence with the gentleman for, with the property taxes. And he said that they specifically take and put their application in for one megawatt. Because then they don't have that additional tax increase, which that one and a, from 1% to one and a half, really isn't much of anything, to be honest. And if Zion Township was really concerned about the revenue for taxation, we would, we would permit housing development. I mean, if they're taking seven acres out, we would definitely get more revenue if we had a development of seven houses at $350,000 each. Versus putting in the solar gardens. I get concerned about decommissioning. I know that we, it's required $185,000 to put down as far as a allotment. But in 35 years, is that going to be really enough money? I kind of doubt if it'd even be enough right now, today. And so then, who is the one, and I'm not sure who's responsible, when they do the decommissioning, if they don't do the decommissioning? Is that the township or the county, the landowner? Does anybody know?
Shall I address that? The, the developer's responsible, and if they fail to do it, then we would take the money that was provided at the beginning. And do it with that money. Be the county, the township wouldn't become responsible.
Okay, so if that 185,000 isn't enough, then the county pays for that, the difference?
The process would be that if there was additional money that the county would have to pay, then we would assess that back to the landowner. Which is what we do for any other project, if in fact, we have to pay for certain activities to be managed on a particular private property. So whether it's this project or any other project, if the county has to pay for any reclamation, then it gets assessed back to that property owner. So typically, it's going to be that company first, then we would have a conversation with the landowner. And the last would be then the county using those dollars. And then anything, if in fact, it was over, then it would be assessed back to that property.
So the township, just to clarify, has no responsibility then in that?
Correct.
Right.
Another question that I then have is if it gets to that point and the. County needs to go in and say, okay, we're paying X amount of dollars, and let's say it goes over $100,000, and yes, you put it to that, that landowner's property. Does that mean, I mean, how do you then still get that money? I mean, you're never going to get that money, and is that prior to for sure them decommissioning it? I mean, actually taking it out? You know what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is Zion Township does not want to have solar farm junkyards for some reason. If they're not, you know, if they're put up, and if they're not decommissioned, and we have issues with it later on. We don't want them just sitting there basically abandoned.
Mr. Chair, the answer is the assessment goes back on taxes. And as, as many of you have seen or witnessed, there are some lands that go tax forfeit. And then if it goes tax forfeit, then someone else buys that property. But those assessments and all those things that are there have to be paid prior to that sale going through. So it would be the same thing, whether it be this or any other type of project, it would be an assessment. And then again, if that went tax forfeit, we'd go through a process. So it wouldn't be anything different than any other project that way. It is not the responsibility of the township.
Thank you.
I just ask that since Zion Township has had such an influx of our applications coming in with the solar gardens. That you, as the board, would allow the township, as the local government would take and. Oh, sorry, to allow us to regulate this permit or have us take and put more thought into the actual project. And have us review with us having the moratorium. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask. If you said, I don't recall, how many applications do you have exactly right now for Zion Township?
There are six.
Six?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm aware of the one that's permitted and, and built, and then I'm aware of three other applications that we have. Two on the Rochealanka property and one on Shanaker? Is that right? Yeah, that's the only ones we have in our hands, so.
The other ones Fritz had shared with us, and there was a, there were six.
And those are?
Those are not an application right now.
Right, but those will, then the next step would be the application.
But now there's a moratorium.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to respond, Chair, if I may respond. So as far as the taxation, it's Minnesota Statute, Section 272.02 subdivision 24. The state legislature changed that statute this year to include sites that are up to five megawatts in terms of taxation. That's how the taxation changes. They changed the taxation this year.
Okay, because.
As, as far as other, as far as Zion Township seeing more applications, I'd only say that there are many hurdles. Before we get to the point where we would actually submit an application. So any developer in the state would go through a significant review about whether they actually want to apply. Because we, we have to pay for any number of reports to, to make sure that this project doesn't go. We have significant money invested on the front end before we bring it to application. I think I related to you that our projects, the ones that I gave to you, are on hold for three and a half years yet because we sit in line. So a lot of things can change in three and a half years. So I, I just want to make that clear, that there's no, there's no application from our company before Zion Township, other than, other than the ones that Ms. Buckantine mentioned, so.
There is one other thing I wanted to bring to the attention is. We were informed by our local fire department, just as an FYI, if there happens to be a fire in one of these solar farms. They cannot go in there and stop it. It has to, once it crosses the fence, then they can stop it. And in my opinion, if you have a fire going like that, and if it happens to be on the whole seven acres, or 14, or 20, or whatever it gets started on. That's a pretty darn big fire, and you have to wait until it goes beyond that fence for them to stop it. So how are they going to do that? That's another thing. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is that because of what, toxic fumes that come from burning solar panels, or what?
I have to ask Mr. Berg, Dan? The power? Oh, because of the power in the solar panels, the danger.
May I, may I respond?
Please.
So the technology requires a rapid shutdown, and the way that you, you stop a solar field from producing energy is you isolate it. And so you knife it at the, the energized side and the other side, and that's how you isolate it. But internally, those panels also have automatic shutdown, which is why the quality of power actually is probably higher than what you would see from a power line. So there is, there is a lot of fire code wrapped around any kind of solar installation. But a solar array like this, if it were to catch fire, and I don't know what the odds of that are, but. The, the various metals and, and glass and things like that, if they. Burning, what kind of toxicity is there for any public safety responders to a fire like that? Is there any, is there any research on that, or? There, there may be research, and I can dig that up, but I, I've not known that to be a problem.
But I also have to say that keep in mind, if, even if it's not the solar panels that would start a fire, you have your, your grass and your native lands. That's a big grass fire. That is no different than turning a field, like somebody flicks a cigarette out, and you got a fire going. It's the same type of thing. Yes, he can maybe stop the electricity, but that's not stopping all that ground, you know, vegetation and stuff from catching on fire. And if you have seven acres on fire, that's, that's going to be very, very difficult to take and maintain, so thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the township. So you're just, if I'm correct, the township has an interest in maintaining row crop, row crop agriculture, did you state that right? Has the township discussed having a moratorium on practices such as the Conservation Reserve Program and the Reinvest Minnesota Program? Both of those take land out of agricultural production for 10 to 15 to permanent years. So is there an interest in seizing that kind of activity in the county, in the township?
I would say is a possibility. We weren't aware of what you just stated there, but that is something we could definitely look into.
Interesting.
And see if that would be a benefit to our township. Okay. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you waiting to speak?
This has nothing to do with the solar panels, but we already, we already in Zion Township have a thousand plus acres in DNR and pheasants forever. And we, we have quite a few big farmers in the township. Now they have to drive around another seven, eight acres of solar panels with 50, 60-foot pieces of equipment. It just doesn't pencil out. This has got nothing to do with the solar panels, but it just says for interest on your panel. A thousand acres being gobbled up by a pheasant's forever in DNR, and that's probably going to happen with the solar panels also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, may I respond?
Let's move on, please.
Yuri Reek, 21388 293rd Avenue, Paynesville. Just as far as the applications and potential for, there are, there's a lot of bush beating out there by the solar panel companies. I can attest to that because we get, we get letters quite regularly, and we've had people stop in. So it may take three and a half years, but that's not a very long time in the big picture. There, there's a lot of interest in putting solar panels in Zion Township for whatever reason. And as far as the fire potential, I witnessed a solar panel fire just like five weeks ago. At the one, I think it's in Paynesville, but it's across from the shooting range down there. Just one of the, one of the panels or transformers spontaneously started burning on a Sunday afternoon. And somebody there called it in, and the sheriff was down there. And when the fire department got there, he wouldn't let them in because nobody would answer the number, you know, the phone number. And so it, but it did burn itself out in the, in, in the fenced-in area. But if there'd have been a lot of dry grass in there, it might not have ended that way. But anyway, just to- But anyway, just to, just to clarify that, I was told that it was by the, someone on the fire department, that it, it does happen more often than you would think, that none of them have, have turned into anything, but there are fires.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Jennifer, do we have any correspondence to share?
I have no written correspondence.
I would be looking for a motion then.
You can close the public hearing?
Yes. Or is there more discussion?
I, I was enthusiastic.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. I got a motion to close the public hearing from Tara and a second from Jason. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, let's move on to any further discussion at all.
Mr. Chairman, just real brief wrap-up. What the tax forfeit, and I think we're all familiar with properties, just on Tuesday's board meeting, we set the minimum price on tax forfeited properties in six communities. One of them was in Paintsville. The minimum purchase, so the bid, if people want to, these are tax forfeited homes that are depleted, we've all seen them. Sean's on the council, you know, Dave's got experience with Lee Park, we've all, we've all seen these. They're very bad properties, they look terrible, whatever. Well, the, the properties were in the $10,000, $15,000 range. So these homes were worth $150,000, $200,000, and we've set the minimum bid, we could literally, if we, if we get $10,000, we're selling them. We want to dump them because we don't want them. So once that tax forfeiture kicks in, I can guarantee you, and I think we all know that, there isn't going to be a lot of money. You know, because again, there's tax forfeit, there's fees, nobody's going to want to buy and have to incur $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 in doing something, so that would just be a concern. Landowners have rights, but we always have to be concerned that there aren't winners and losers. I reminded the power line. When the power line came through, a lot of people were against the power line, and all of a sudden, the landowner was going to get a post, and he was going to get $200,000. Well, suddenly that landowner didn't care. Well, the neighbors to this, they have to live with it. Because, so when you do winners and losers, where one landowner benefits, and then 10 of them have to pay the price, that's always kind of a dicey, dicey thing. The reason that 12 of the applications that were approved by the county did not come to fruition is kind of what you referenced. If XL's not going to buy the energy, and that's not done, if the finance, if the deep pockets don't come, whatever, that's, well, and yet we're going through all this, and it may not happen. And of course, worst case, if it does happen, for Zion Township's case, it's totally counter to what they, they want. And even though the moratorium went into effect after the applications are made, we always are told, listen to local units of government, we need to engage local units. So this does not mean if the recommendation was made to deny it, and if the county board did not approve it, this would not be the end of this project. This would give Zion Township the benefit to come up with what they want to do and what they would allow, and then you can reapply. So this is not, it would not end the project, it would just pause it and respect the local unit of government that would want to sort this through, including the DNR letter and all these other issues that would give everybody a little bit of time to take a deep breath and, and take a look at it.
Thank you, Jeff.
And the interest in Zion Township, if I didn't explain that, Mr. Chairman, Paintsville Township's not allowing them, city is done with those two, and everybody, you need to be close to the substation. More than likely, they're not, not going to go to St. Martin Township unless something really creative happens, and then they better look out. But they're just pounding Zion because there's no place else. They asked Jesse James, why do you rob banks? He said, well, that's where the money is. Well, why are they going to Zion Township? Well, right now, how in the world could that many applications come into a little township that quickly? And thank God they did the moratorium to get a deep breath, because that's the only place to go now. And if we don't do something, they're just going to pound them in to a township that doesn't want them. Let's take some time, let's take a deep breath, and that we still could allow them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bertram. Let's move on to the findings of fact now. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, in regards to, is it consistent with the zoning ordinance? Yes, it is. It's in the Land Use Zoning Ordinance 439, Sections 4.18, 6.54, and 9.2.6.
Thank you, Rich.
The solar farm is allowed as an interim use permit in an Ag 80 zoning district.
Thank you, Rich. Anyone else? No. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections, please.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. I believe it does with quite a few of them. So under agricultural goals, utilize sustainable practices to protect farmland, prime farmland and water quality for future generations. Under Ag Use Policies, number one, includes in their statement that says, primary ag land uses should be agricultural oriented in combination with limited agricultural businesses, solar, wind, recreation, and open spaces. Under Clean Energy Policies, under number one, site solar energy systems to reduce conflicts. And number two is continue to require beneficial habitat cover on solar sites. And number five is encourage the development and use of renewable energy systems throughout the county, including wind and solar energy.
Thank you, Jason. Any response? Number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I would say it is not. When you look at the sound, the surrounding area, all that land is being used currently, it's for row crops, and it does not fit that area of Zion Township.
Thank you, Rich. Any response? Number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, the applicant has provided quite a, quite a bit of information related to what is proposed to be built, where it's supposed to be built, how it will meet the requirements of the ordinance, how it will meet requirements of the environmental compliance, and.
And the seven conditions?
And the seven conditions, yep.
Mr. Chair, I'm not clear on whether or not the setback requirements have been met for this project. So until we have clarification on that, it'd be hard for me to support it.
Mr. Chair, could I just clarify that the discussion we brought up about the road setback was for the other solar garden, not the one we're reviewing? Because this one isn't on that 225th Street?
Okay.
Right, thank you.
Is the setback from County Road 10, is it met?
Yes, from 10 it is.
Yes, okay.
Yep, correct.
I apologize.
Mr. Chair, just a clarifying question for staff regarding the conditions. So under 7A, it states if possible. What do we mean by if possible? Who determines that?
We would like you guys to determine if it's required or not required. The if possible came from the DNR's comments.
Mr. Chair, can I respond to that?
Please.
I prefer conditions that can actually be met and measured and have a definite, a definite scope. And I do not believe that 7A has a scope that can be proven or disproven, and so I'd like to strike that.
I agree with that.
7A.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
Just ask a clarifying, is there an intent to put something else in its place or not to strike?
For me, no.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
I think when you, when you see that, I would call it a condition or whatever, you usually see that in, when they're doing power lines in a, in a lowland, wetland area, and then they put the matting down and on top of frozen ground, that way it doesn't sink.
Mr. Chair, I have another question on the conditions, 7D, also one that was brought up from the DNR letter. It says to revegetate disturbed soil with native species suitable to local habitat as soon after construction as possible. I believe you've already met those conditions in the plans that have been provided by the applicant, as well as some of the other conditions that are here, so I'd just like to strike 7D also.
Right, certainly a little redundancy there. Okay. Anything more, any more comments? We're going to move on to other issues pertinent to this matter.
Mr. Chair, the, the township members did speak about the snow distribution. Granted, it's from the northern site, but they did express concern about that, so validate their concerns.
Certainly, I think we also need to mention the fact that there is now a moratorium in effect. It did not affect this application, but the town has made it known that they want to control this growth, and maybe we want to keep that in mind. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to go back on 7A and 7D. Even though those items are listed in the proposal, this is kind of the county's checklist to make sure those items were taken care of. So I think if we're going to eliminate these two, then something needs to be written in there in regards to they must meet their proposal in regards to revegetating the area. I, I, you know.
Yep. Can I respond to that, Chair?
Sure.
I think for 7D, what I'm trying to get at is seven, or 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D. I think all cover what is in 7D, and I just don't see the need to have a redundant condition that may or may not be subject to somebody's interpretation.
So in regards to that, it's already in our recommendation, so.
Yep.
I'll agree with the elimination of the, yeah, I've seen that there. All right, thank you.
Very thanks.
Anyone else? Anything else? I'll expect a motion then.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. I move, we recommend a approval request for the interim use permit to construct a one megawatt solar energy system with the elimination of the two conditions, 7A and 7D.
Mr. Chair, we also will need to decide on condition number one.
Is that the time limit?
The expiration.
Expiration date?
With the 35-year expiration.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, when I reviewed the, the panels that are putting in, it's quite a big adjustment from the panels we've seen five years ago. This is even a tracking system, very high quality.
All righty. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, second motion.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call, please. The two ayes.
Yes.
For Jason and Tara.
I have an aye, too.
And Mike? And the rest are no's. I'm, I'm a no. Okay, oh. So what do we call that then?
Mr. Chair, the action at a tie vote goes to the county board, and the county board makes a decision.
All right, thank you. That's what will happen then, and thank you.
Thank you.
After all that, we still do have one more. Agenda item number three. Number three is to consider an amendment to interim use permit, P 017694, submitted by Joel Imdike of Melrose, Minnesota, according to Sections 4.18, 7.17, and 9.3.6D of Sterns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439, to extend the mining area an additional 24.6 acres in the Ag 40, A40 zoning district. The proposal is located in part of the northwest quarter, northeast quarter, and Government Lot 1 in Section 15, lying east of County Road 13 in Grove Township. The property address is 36008 County Road 13, Melrose. And let's take a quick roll call of everyone who was there. District 1, Jason?
I was not here for this one, but I was here for the 2021, so I'm familiar with the site.
Dave?
Yes, I did visit.
I, we're going to skip Jason, I was there. Mike Pro?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes, I was.
Tara Ostendorf?
I was not.
And Jeff Bertram?
I was.
Thank you.
I was.
Thank you. Staff report, please.
All right. So this request for this expansion to the gravel pit, mining operation, it's been before the county a couple of times, originally in 2019. That original pit was allowed to be 4.4 acres. Then a year later, in 2020, they expanded it to that yellow 14 acres. Now they're requesting to add an additional 24.6, which is the red. And so the last permit that was approved had the conditions that are outlined, letters A through K. And what they're requesting to amend would be, well, actually, none of the conditions, it's just the, the amount of acreage. So just to comment on the conditions, a couple of notes I have here. One of the conditions was letter H regarding fuel storage and refueling. So fuel storage shall not occur in the areas where the geologic cover, meaning the top soil, has been removed, or within the mining areas. But then if equipment is fueled within those areas where aggregate or minerals are exposed or being mined, it should be done over an impervious pad or other surface where spills can be contained and cleaned up. So a little confusing, two separate things. Fuel storage shall not occur in the pit, but if you're going to refuel, let's say a truck comes down there with fuel, and they're going to refuel something, the condition stated it should be done over an impervious pad. So when I went out there with folks from Soil and Water Conservation District, what we learned is that they do fuel equipment down in the pit, they don't have an impervious pad, they do have developed a spill response plan to identify if there is a spill, how they would deal with it, how they would address it and treat it. So that is a comment on H. Letter I was in regards to a well, so I should back up a bit because some of you weren't here when this was originally permitted, but part of this pit is located within the city of Melrose's DWISMA, and that stands for Drinking Water Supply Management Area. And so that's related to the city of Melrose's wells. And so this, part of this area that is being mined is considered to be an area of influence for the city wells, which are to the north. So anyway, the condition said, prior to locating a well within the city's DWISMA that may be used for washwater, the applicant shall address the impacts that groundwater pumping may have on altering the DWISMA boundary, or the vulnerability of a public water supply well. So what we learned is that they did install a well right on the corner of the DWISMA there, and we reviewed that with the Soil and Water Conservation District and the city of Melrose, and the Department of Health reviewed it. Well, and then they're also working with the DNR on a water appropriation permit. So those comments from those entities were included in your packets as well. So MDH, the Department of Health, indicates they don't see a need to hold up the expansion request, and the state would, will take the new well into account when they update the DWISMA in the future. The full comments, like I said, were attached. The full comments, like I said, were attached. So, when looking at the pit area, you'll see part of it's within the shoreline of Black Oak Lake, but mining is allowed within shoreline, as long as they're more than 200 feet from the lake. And then I mentioned that we're partially in the DWISMA, which is that shaded area on the east side of the pit. There also is one wetland, well, there's a couple wetlands out there. So what they've done, Joel can attest, it's been, they submitted the application last spring, and here we finally are, because it took them a while to get wetlands delineated. So, now the mining boundary has been updated to avoid any wetlands, and so that is not an issue in that regard. Let's see. The surrounding area, it's an agricultural zoned area, it's A40. There's about 13 homes, two registered feedlots within the half-mile buffer that we look at, one of those being the landowners. So I'll just read through, or I'll summarize, I think, the conditions. So, if the planning commission recommends approval, we would request that he updates his financial guarantee. So it's $3,500 an acre is what we've been requiring, and he actually already had the insurance company do a rider to increase the bond up to the $136,500. And number two, a water appropriation permit has been applied for, and if said permit is not approved, gravel washing shall cease. If the permit is approved, the operation of a well and gravel washing is allowed. And then the rest of the conditions would stay the same. So the hours of operation, which has been 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, six days a week, no mining on Sundays or holidays. The IUP shall expire December 31, 2049. We would strike item four, or, I'm sorry, item five, that's been replaced by one above. Six, require truck hauling signs to be posted when they're hauling. Seven, all performance standards in the zoning ordinance shall be met, and we always provide a copy with the permit. Eight, an informational sign is required at the entrance, which they do have that there. Number nine, surface water runoff shall be controlled to avoid draining towards areas of high groundwater vulnerability. Number nine, fuel storage shall not occur where, within the pit, and then if equipment is fueled, it should be on an impervious pad where spills can be contained or cleaned up. We'll strike 11, because they did address the well. And then 12, the standard, lighting standards in Section 715 of the zoning ordinance shall be met, which basically means direct the lights down into the pit and not out to the surrounding land. And 13, provide a copy of the survey to the, of the property to the department. Actually, we have that. We could strike 13, we have that survey. That's all I have. I don't have any correspondence from the public either.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, quick question, number 10. So you said they have a spill response plan, which is referred to in that. Should we reference the spill response plan? Because it seems they're violating number 10.
We sure could.
Yeah, let's do that. So we would have to...
So I guess we would change number 10 to be, the applicant shall abide by this submitted spill response plan.
Could we say, if not done over an impervious pad, they shall maintain and abide by a spill response plan?
Much better stated.
Very good. Now, this year, this expiration date has not changed, correct?
Correct.
We're not changing anything else.
They haven't requested that to change, right?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. When we're doing, just for my own understanding of the procedure here, when we're doing an amendment to an interim use permit, what's the difference between amending it to a much bigger extent than what was originally permitted, to just applying for a new permit? What would the difference be?
That's a great question. The application for an amendment is much, much shorter, but it also included their original application, so you could see all of their plans in the original application. Otherwise, the full review is done, the new expanded area has to comply with all the standards, so the review is essentially the same. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, at some point, I'd like to engage in conversation also about, at some point in time, we're expanding the size of this pit so much, at what point are we going to start asking for a restoration plan? A lot of that's already mined out. There's a point in time where maybe we should be putting it back into production, or lessening the ice, or...
That's absolutely correct. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, we actually have done a restoration plan prior to opening it up, what our thoughts and stuff were, and as soon as we have enough area, you know, when you're taking the clay off the other hills, we'll start reclaiming it back into the part that are already mined, but you need enough room to stockpile the material, the, you know, stuff. And, I mean, if you told me today to make a plan of the 439 acres, what it's going to look like when it's done, I would tell you what's under the dirt, then I'll tell you. You know, because I don't know what it'll exactly look like when it's done, until we see what we find, you know.
That's what a drill truck is for.
Yeah.
I know, I worked in construction for 20 years, and I worked on a lot of the counties closer to the cities, and they only allow so many acres open at a time, and you're not allowed to mine anymore until you restore the stuff that you already have made, and they have allowances for a storage pad for material also.
And what I have found out is, if you go over 40, then you've got to start dealing with the state on everything.
Mr. Chair, I was just going to say, my comment is that this is 39 acres, which the requirement for mandatory EAW is 40 acres, so we're one acre below, when you would actually have to know what's under that dirt, to actually know what you are mining out and what your effect on the groundwater is. Most of the applicants, the application questions that are on here relate to, I don't know what we're, what we have and are there. And so, I'm, my only concern is that you're opening it up to the maximum extent you can go before you actually have to know something.
Right.
About what you're doing with the land.
That's a good concern. It's about, it's almost like dodging accountability.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, we see that all the time on FELON applications.
That's true. Chair, two things, I don't believe we got the applicant's name and address yet, did we?
Nope. Go ahead and give us that, please.
Joel Imdike, Melrose.
And then, the question on, or the comment I was going to make on the reclamation plan, so we do require they submit a reclamation plan, which is in the packets, but to your points, at what point do they start actually reclaiming? Do we want to require they phase in the reclaiming? We've done that on larger pits in the past, but anyway, that's something you can talk about.
What would an example of that language be? Is it a percentage-based thing? Is...
It'd be a percentage base, it could be acreage-based. One pit that, one pit we permitted, the first year we had zoning was 400 acres, and so that permit only can have 100 acres open at any time, before they have to reclaim. So it's a big, a much different scale, but it could be acreage-based.
Mr. Chairman, does the county, I think the county's got a pit right beside that, don't they?
The county are, the county are in this pit.
Yep.
Well, they're in the pit.
Yep.
I bet they own the pit.
No, they don't own the pit.
The county certainly should be responsible then for...
As far as the timing of reclaiming it, or...
I don't know. Any help?
Plan to reclaim, Joel, as you go?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there some language we want to write in here?
That's what I'm looking for, because when you, we're here, we have the permit, this is the time to put it in, otherwise, if I was doing it and if I didn't want to, because restoration does cost money, and if you're not going to force them to do it, they're not going to do it.
Well, that's what the bond is for, though.
Mr. Chair was going to, yeah, state that, so what the ordinance requires is, once the permit expires, they have one year to finish up the reclamation, and that's where we would hold them to that plan that they submitted, and if not done properly, we would use the bond to finish it.
But that's just the final product?
Yep.
End result?
Correct.
So there's nothing we can do in the meantime to...
That's, that's what...
Enforce some kind of standards?
That's what the standard could be here, in that when, the condition, we could specify, once they open up another 10 acres, they have to, they have to restore 10. We don't have to wait till 30, 30 years.
Is that a reasonable amount of acreage?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay.
So there's, oh, there are probably 10 open now, so before they go any further, they have to reclaim some. Is that realistic?
Oh, I thought you meant after I would reclaim, or do...
Another 10?
Yeah, like, let's say I wanted to do another 10 to the north, then of that 14.4, I had to have 10 of that reclaimed, so there'd never be more than 40 open at a time.
Sorry.
He's a little complicated.
That's the question that it comes down to, is there a maximum amount the planning commission would like to see open at any time? That's the key. And, we haven't done that on a recent permit, other than that one I could think of from 20 years ago. Let me look at one. But, yeah, talk amongst yourselves.
Joel, can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? What was your plan for opening up more? Do you just, do you need it, like, do you have an annual plan for how much you want to open?
Ideally, my plan is, what's permitted now, I would like to mine that out, and then, where the section line runs up from the Melrose, where the mountain says Melrose, there's another real high ridge that runs to the north. And once I would get that ridge out, and the stuff that's in the area now, that would all be level enough where I could put a pivot on there. It's very highly erodible land, so for farming, it's not, on a wet year, it's, it sucks. You know, so that, that's the ultimate goal, you know, what I would like to do. You know, and I don't, as far as jobs coming in, you know, the county, you know, they take a certain amount or whatever, I can't tell you if it'll be 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, you know. But no, I do not want a hole in the ground when we're done.
Mr. Chair, for Joel, a similar question, I guess, to Tara's, but the expansion, or the new proposed site, is any of that agriculture right now, cropland?
It's pretty much all cropland.
All of it, okay. So, just, and I'm, I am new, relatively new to this, and I'm not sure, but what are the factors that determine when you go, when the existing mining operation is no longer profitable? Is it depth, or what, what would cause you to want to move into the other area, and do you know, like, when you think you'd start tapping into this new land?
Right now, we're dealing with depth.
Depth?
Because, I mean, well, Jen was down there, I could potentially mine as far as a log reach hole could reach, and then leave a water hole there when I'm done, but that's not my intention of what I want to do with the farm.
Got it, okay.
You know, I want it reclaimed, I want it farmed, you know. But as far as if, if, I mean, the amount of material that's in that 14.4, if you were going to mine it out and leave it to lake, I mean, there'd probably be 15, 20 years in there, you know.
Okay, got it. So is your, is the intent with something like this to return it to productive farmland?
Yes.
Were you talking about reclamation or restoring?
Yes, once I would get this, and then when I would get that other ridge out to the north, then it would be flat enough I could put a pivot on it. And then, you know, with what clay and topsoil is left, you know, I mean, it would take years, you know, to get the humus and stuff back in it, but it would be much better land than it is today, you know.
Yeah, well, okay, because I was like, this is a gravel pit, how do you make it productive farmland when you're done mining?
You level it off, and then you put three, four feet of clay over the top, and then whatever black dirt you got left, and then you put a lot of organic matter into it.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we at? Anyone from the public? Is there anyone online, or any correspondents? Nothing?
No correspondence.
Need a motion?
Public hearing?
Rich made a motion.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dave, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries. Further discussion at all? Did we nail down how we wanted to change that percentage, or acreage, or how we want to word that?
No. Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commission members, I look back at our one previous permit from a few years ago, and we didn't limit it there, so I think the easiest thing would limit the amount of acres that could be open at a time, and I don't know if half, 20 acres at a time is more realistic? I don't know.
No, I think, ask the applicant, maybe, how many acres at a time do you think?
That's what I was thinking, 20.
20 acres?
If you have 20 open, if you wanted to, if you have 40, once 20's open, if you wanted to open another 10, you should reclaim that 10.
That sounds good.
You know.
All right. Findings of fact. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I would say that it is, it's continued, continued, consistent use with what's been there already.
Thank you, Dave. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? List applicable sections, please.
Mr. Chair, I believe that there are a number of plan goals that are met, specifically the nature goal, number four, protect the county's aggregate resources and provide for reasonable economic use of aggregate.
Was there a response? All right, number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I would say that while it is a rather large potential expansion, it seems consistent with the area, and didn't seem to me to cause too much disruption to neighbors, or, you know, things like that.
All right, thank you, Dave. Number four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, they would be satisfied by the proposed two new conditions, and the existing, wow, 13? 12?
12, I think.
Whatever the, we, whatever we had consensus on.
Thank you, Jason. I would also add that he's, he has been sticking to the standards and criteria already at this point, so. Any other pertinent issues, anyone wants to mention?
One, on the recommended action, one of the questions that I have, just for clarification for the applicant, number nine, surface water runoff shall be controlled to avoid draining towards areas of high groundwater vulnerability, is that listed somewhere, the areas of high groundwater vulnerability, other than just the whole site? Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commission members, we do have a map. No, that shows the DWISMA. Okay, let me just see here. Yeah, we had comments from Soil and Water on that, so let me see here, what did they say? Okay. Okay, so, according to the DWISMA map, the current vulnerability is considered moderate. Since the topsoil and surface soils have been removed, and the city is going to want to keep this area in mind when they update their wellhead protection plan, the vulnerability may need to be changed in this area, and the gravel pit may need to be added to the PCSI list, if it wasn't in their plan already. PCSI list if it wasn't in their plan already. So, what Soil and Water says is it's, this, the pit is in a moderate vulnerability area. That's a good question. I believe the high vulnerability is to the north towards the wells, but I can confirm that. Would you like me to confirm it and add that on the condition, like?
I, I would like to add that a map of those high vulnerability areas be added.
Yep.
Thank you, Ted. Anything more? I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the amended interim use permit to allow for the additional 24.6 acres to be used in the mining operation. I believe there are some conditions, and I don't know if I can restate them completely, but I think there was one about 10 acres. To, to start 10 new acres, 10 needs to be restored. There are some other conditions that I don't recall exactly.
Certainly, thank you. I have a motion from Dave.
Hold seconded.
And a second from Rich. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, just one item of clarification. On the acres, we, I heard 20 acre limit earlier. Was it 20, or Dave mentioned 20?
Well, he was saying with permitting, if you want to permit 10 more, you have to reclaim 10.
But we're talking...
But it was 20 that could be open at one time.
In the pit?
Yeah.
Is that what you guys were understanding?
That was my understanding.
Perfect. Thank you.
The pit will never be over 40 acres, and there'll never be over 20 open at that time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item number four, minutes we need to approve.
I would move to approve the minutes.
I have a motion from Dave.
Second.
Second from Rich. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, motion carries. Other discussion? Nothing?
I bet staff probably has some.
Good, good meeting.
I got, I need a motion.
All make a move.
Rich made a motion to adjourn. Dave seconded it. All in favor? Aye. 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 Okay.